Reach consensus and then move forward to solve problems.
We’ll call this meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council to order, please. Today is October 1st, 2019. We’ll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Mayor Mario.
Here.
Mayor Pratam Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you. We have a ceremonial item. What is that?
Ceremonial item: Employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, each month, I like to recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their service with the city. And we have one person here today to receive their pin in person. With five years of service, Rosie Deistie, project planner, community development department; Michael Herrick, police officer, police department; Shawn Cozens, police officer, police department; Matthew LaBarge, police officer, police department; and Kelly Reed, airport operations supervisor with the airport department. With 10 years of service to the city, Daniel Garcia, police officer, police department. With 15 years of service to the city, Brenda Belts, associate planner, community development department. With 20 years of service to the city, Tracy Barnett, administrative assistant, public works department; and Callie Marquez, electronics communications tech 2, public works department. With 25 years of service, John Williams, police officer, police department; and with 30 years of service, Freda Markowitz, administrative specialist, parks and recreation department. And here to receive his pin in person with 25 years of service, Matt Donahue, senior airport maintenance worker, airport department.
Mr. Donahue? There you go. There you go. Here’s your pin.
Thank you.
We made your proclamation.
Okay.
This is a certificate of appreciation for valued service to the city of Santa Barbara, Matthew Donahue, senior airport maintenance worker for 25 years of service. Matt Donahue began his career with the city of Santa Barbara on October 31st, 1994, when he joined the airport team as a maintenance worker, too. Matt was promoted to senior airport maintenance worker on June 1st, 2002. Matt has devoted his entire career with the city to the airport. During that time, he has been trained in aviation disaster preparedness and has responded to multiple airfield incidents and participated in many full-scale emergency exercises. Matt has been recognized by the American Association of Airport Executives with the distinction of Airport Certified Employee, ACE, in airfield lighting. During his airport career, Matt has developed an intricate knowledge of all buildings and systems at the airport. He is an expert on the airport’s airfield lighting system and takes pride in maintaining a safe airfield environment. During his tenure at the airport, Matt has been instrumental in countless building renovation and repair projects. During emergencies, floods, and major system failures, Matt always answers the call and provides steady, calm leadership while solving the problems at hand. Matt served as the onsite airport point of contact throughout construction of the Ricard Terminal and worked tirelessly during the opening gala assisting guests. Matt is always enthusiastic about participating in airport-hosted aviation events like Airport Days, Airport Adventure, World War II aircraft displays, and school career fairs. His positive attitude and ability to get the job done has earned him many accolades. Matt lives in Buellton with his children and wife Shelley. Matt is active in the community and has helped his family thrive through participation with his children in Boy Scouts and AYSO. Matthew, it is my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, your fellow employees, and all of our city residents, we congratulate you on your admirable achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you say it again?
Sure. Thank you. I have to say that it has been a complete honor to work for the city of Santa Barbara and to serve the people of Santa Barbara. I want to thank my wife, who’s been with me for 35 years. How this all started was, I proposed to her, and she said, “Not until you get a full-time job.” So, we have her to thank for this. And it’s been a wonderful ride. It’s been an honor to work with the people I work with. I’ve had the opportunity to work with many different generations. I had the opportunity to work with the World War II generation, Vietnam generation, and just humbled by their work ethic and integrity. And I’m honored, and I appreciate it, and I look forward to many more years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That closes our ceremonial section. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We’ll go to public comment. And this is our opportunity to hear from the public on items that are not on our official agenda. Holly Perea is in the back. If you’d like to make an appointment with any of us, or if you have questions for staff, we can’t really get into discussion because those items are not on the agenda. Caroline Abate, you’re first, come on up. Monica Ramirez, after you. Sherri Ray, after her. Denise Adams. Watch the clock. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you about how President Trump is protecting our economic sovereignty by stopping globalist trade practices that are unfair to American companies and American workers. President Trump withdrew the United States from the dangerous trade agreement known as the Trans-Pacific Partnership, which would have put 40% of the global economy under the control of a small group of unelected globalist bureaucrats. Being part of a global economic partnership requires a nation to surrender their economic independence and comply with the trade policies of the partnership, regardless of how harmful those policies are. Because our American economy is the largest, strongest, and most stable in the partnership, policies would naturally be set to benefit countries with the smaller and less stable economies, at the unfair and harmful expense of American workers, jobs, and companies. President Trump believes that international trade deals must occur in a free market, without any subsidies, currency manipulation, or any other type of interference. They must be fair and reciprocal, so that both nations share an equal amount of benefit. This allows trade agreements to be stable and durable, which in turn fosters international cooperation and goodwill between trading partner countries that protects against future conflicts. President Trump has also negotiated a bilateral trade agreement with South Korea and is in the process of navigating through the renegotiation of an extremely complex and challenging trade agreement with China, our largest trading partner. Last week, at the meeting of the United Nations, President Trump signed a bilateral trade agreement with Japan. This agreement will open markets up to about $7 billion in American agricultural products. Japan will also reduce tariffs on products such as beef and pork and eliminate tariffs on goods like almonds, blueberries, and broccoli, which is one of the main vegetable crops grown in the North County in Santa Maria. Each person will have an extremely important decision to make next November as they mark their ballot and decide who will be our next president. Please think very carefully about your choice, and please support President Trump, as he continues to do the real and meaningful work that needs to be done to ensure a free and sovereign, peaceful, and prosperous future for our beloved country for generations of Americans to enjoy. Thank you for being willing to consider these ideas.
Ms. Ramirez, are you here?
Yes. Okay. Again, I’m Monica Christina Ramirez, and I am a native Kachuma, Deutchman, Santa Barbarian. And once again, I’m going to ask, how do I reenact my rights, my constitutional rights, my human rights, my parental rights? I want to know what’s going on. My children were taken from me by the Joyce Steadley. There’s charges against this man. My child was given to a multi-convicted felon. I have made numerous reports to the Santa Barbara Police Department to react to the visitation order that Judge Adona gave me. They are not responding. They tell me to contact Joyce Steadley. I contact her, she doesn’t respond. I contact the victim-witness program because we’re involved in violent act because this man tried to throw my 16-year-old son out the window. I have not seen my 10-year-old for two and a half years. Now, he is 13. Judge Adona gave me a visitation rights order in August of 2017. I have not seen my son. And I keep asking for the “Please adhere to the law. Do the investigation.” I have been cruelly mistreated. I was taken out without a search warrant or a seizure warrant, taken out by Officer McBride and Officer Ford, breaking in my apartment, drugging me. And I was taken to Los Encinas, Pasadena, where they court ordered me to be on drugs. I have scrubs that show big blood spots right here of where they took me to the psychiatric hospital in Los Encinas to get me court ordered to do drugs. I’m not a drug user. I’m not an alcoholic. I’m not mentally ill. I want to know what’s going on. I love my children. I’m a great, great mother. I was teaching my son how to make pancakes, and I was physically disabled. I’ve had six surgeries from Dr. Hollander to fix my bilateral sciatica because that man tried to throw my son out the window, and I put him in a headlock. I have not had an opportunity because I was physically disabled in a wheelchair, walker, walking sticks, back in a wheelchair, walker, back to one walking stick. And because I had a walking stick, they thought I was violent. I have never been violent, but just because I was a mother bear, because that man tried to throw my son out that window. Joyce Steadley has been corrupting this whole entire county. She has kidnapped many, many children and have lied about us and putting the stigma of mental illness on us. I am not mentally ill. And I want to know, how do I get my rights back? Because I’ve never committed a felony. This man is a multi-convicted felon. This family is corrupt. They have committed three violations of court orders, and I want action. I want my children. My son Dakota, who was involved, the attempted murder being thrown out the window, was stabbed in December. I’m not his emergency contact. He was put in the psychiatric hospital in September of 2018.
Ms. Ramirez, thank you for your comments.
I want recognition and help. How do I get my rights back?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Ms. Ray. Sherri Ray is next. Thanks. Ms. Adams. Denise Adams, after her. Ariana Rose Palmisano. Lori Romero. Michael Baker.
Hi. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sherri Ray. I’m the director of the Dyslexia Project. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. In several previous years, we’ve worked together to create a city proclamation. But this year, I’d like to suggest we move not just into awareness, but action. I recently delivered copies of my book to each member of council and Madam Mayor and had the opportunity actually to meet with councilmembers Gutierrez and Friedman. In the past, I’ve also discussed this issue at length with Mayor Mario, and I appreciate the insights and comments. Dyslexia means trouble with words. It has many strengths and challenges associated with it as well, and it affects one in five individuals of all ages. It doesn’t go away when someone leaves school, whether dyslexia was addressed or not. Through innate intelligence and development of workarounds, the use of technology and building on strengths, many dyslexics are able to function at the highest levels. I know dyslexic architects and artists, engineers and educators, and even a couple who have sat right here on this dais. Santa Barbara boasts several rich and famous dyslexics, like Santa Barbara High School graduate Charles Schwab and entrepreneur Paul Orifila. However accomplished, most individuals with dyslexia want to keep it a secret. They don’t want anybody to know. That’s because despite all evidence to the contrary, too many people believe that this hereditary difference in the brain equals low intelligence, and that can’t be farther from the truth. Because that’s the other side of dyslexia, which we must acknowledge: the sense of shame and low self-esteem, the fear of embarrassment of someone finding out, the loss of reaching full potential, and the too-frequent reality of heading onto the wrong path. We see low literacies in our school levels lead to limited employment opportunities, low economic achievement, and it’s too often a characteristic common to individuals who are incarcerated or living on the streets. I’m here today to request greater community involvement in dyslexia, both in awareness and action, among stakeholders that extend beyond the education community, to the library, social services, social justice, law enforcement, and public health, as well as human resources professionals at every level. It’s time for Santa Barbara to convene community discussions to help dyslexics and their families address the lingering low self-esteem issues, to create mentorships between adult dyslexics who can serve as role models for younger ones, and to provide resources to address dyslexia in the workplace and in our public places, to help create a more dyslexia-friendly community, which Santa Barbara ought to model. What I’ve learned in 10 years as a dyslexia advocate is that no person or group can do it alone. And since dyslexia affects our entire community, let’s work to address it so all can flourish, including that 20% who may have a tough time reading out loud, but who can think outside the box, come up with big-picture solutions to complex problems, and read a situation better than most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Denise Bangler Adams. And I wanted to come today to talk about a meeting I attended last night on the East Side, where approximately 200 very compassionate, concerned people showed up and took their time to address what I consider a public policy issue that affects each and every one of your neighborhoods, except possibly Representative Gutierrez, where you’re obviously densely populated already, but every other neighborhood, including the county. It was a very well-attended meeting of people who really genuinely care. What sadly they were met with was the typical indoctrination of, “You’re not compassionate because you don’t want homeless housing in your neighborhood.” That’s not the issue for me. It’s a county-wide issue that started after the closure of Camarillo State Hospital. I don’t like hearing problems. I don’t like problems dumped on one city or one group. I like to look at, what are the solutions that we have before us? We have the opportunity to call all of the neighborhoods together. I think there’s about 25, 40 neighborhoods, to ask what they would do. It’s a master-planned issue. The county made a commitment. They had an obligation to provide impatient mental health beds up on the county property. They never did that in 1980. I moved here in February 1980, and the reason why we moved here was because of that issue. It never happened. So, I’d like to suggest that we master-plan, that the city not do this alone. There are six different categorical types of homeless and six different types of needs that we have. That we have a police force that is very capable, but if they can’t gather facts or if we do not set up a 211 number, as some of you know, I just came back from New York. It works great. Call 211, and then we get facts and profiles of the different categories of homeless. Are they transitional people, women with children, people who are unemployed, people who just went through a divorce, situational homelessness, or mental illness, et cetera. But we need a count, and we need a 211 number. And I’d like to suggest that we master-plan and get a solution, do some public service announcements, that the city not attempt to do this alone, because it’s an issue that’s county-wide. It’s broader than just the city. If you do something we heard last night, then everybody will come to the city because we’re serving them. I think we need a broader approach, and I want to thank you for paying attention to it. But I think we need a master-plan, and the East Side is not the answer, and I’ll defer to Representative Dominguez. He heard everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Adams. Ms. Palmisano?
Yes.
Lori Romero, after you. Michael Baker.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Again, my name is Ariana Rose Palmisano, and I was here last week. I am here again to protest the decision to begin the environmental review of the Cota Lot for the new police station. The farmer’s market has so far petitioned 7,000 signatures, and these are people from LA County to San Luis Obispo, so it’s not just a county issue. It’s a Southern California issue. We petitioned 7,000 signatures from all these people to remain in the Saturday location. I think it is also a huge risk to build a police station in the Cota Lot. I am encouraging you to please read the opinion piece written by Noe Turk that’s published on the independent.com. It has a lot of information. And also, please read the email from architect Jeff Shelton. I believe that he sent each of you an email, and it’s very informative. I’ll just keep reading. “Santa Barbara is developing so much right now. This will increase the water runoff during storms, and flood maps will change and grow. It seems dangerous to put our first responders so close to the floodline. I have not talked to many people who think that this is a good decision. It doesn’t feel good, and I implore you to consider the feelings of the people. It’s not clear what the good part of this plan is. And I’m going to ask you to reconsider this process and make sure that the final decision has the full support of the entire community.” It’s a lot of money also, and I’ve been requested to bring that up with you. It might be something you can hear, that I’ve heard between $100 and $120 million to build this police station. The police station that is planned for the Cota Lot is 77% larger than the police station from the 2010 paper, when the city in 2010 had a plan to rebuild the police station where it is. And I’m looking for my paper, because I wrote that down. The farmer’s market is in the perfect place right now, and the police station is also in the perfect place for so many reasons. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Ms. Romero? Michael Baker, after you. Jose Arturo Gallegos. Ben White. Piper White.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Lori Romero, and I live on Yonah Nolly Street on the East Side, surrounded by Franklin School, the Franklin Neighborhood Center, Montessori School at the corner, the East Side Library. And there’s also a church in that area that is being used for activities now. That area historically has always been crowded because of the number of low housing developments there are in that area, because of the number of multi-generational families that live in there. So, there’s always been a problem with parking. Last night, I was informed that there was a meeting about another development going up. We just had a recent housing project go up there with not enough parking. Okay, so, there was a meeting last night, and I heard about it and what the previous speaker was saying. So, there isn’t a plan for the parking. Now, because Yonah Nolly Street is already close to the Franklin School, when the Creek Project was done and the whole roundabout was done, there was no signage put in for Yonah Nolly Street. So, currently, people, not only is there no parking, where someone like me is taking my life in my hands every time I pull out of the driveway, because I can’t see in either direction with the crowding of cars, with people dropping off their kids at the Montessori School, which has no parking either, and they’re taking a risk just dropping off their cars. So, there’s no traffic signage other than a 35 from the roundabout. If you really went 35 from the roundabout down Yonah Nolly Street, where you can’t even see when you’re going to turn the corner onto East Side Park, heading toward Franklin School, someone could get hurt. Someone could get sued. There’s a playground right there. This is a park that both Franklin kids and the Montessori kids’ school uses. The whole neighborhood is changing, and so there needs to be improved signage. Everywhere else, there seems to be signage, but that particular street, there’s no red markings next to the driveways for those of us who pull out. You know, no space. I’ve seen people get the police ticket people for blocking our driveways. So, I’m asking you to ask the city engineers to review Yonah Nolly Street. Also, Santa Barbara was the pioneer in the safe parking program in 2004. Since then, other cities have adopted policies. Well, there’s other cities that have residential parking permits for residents in public neighborhoods to be able to park in city lots. We have the Franklin Elementary School. We have the East Side Neighborhood Center. We have the East Side Library. We have parking there. And if you can come up with a plan, like the safe parking program, where residents could get a permit to be allowed to park there during non-use hours, that would really help. So, we need to think out of the box, have a paradigm shift, whatever you want to call it. We need to do something about the parking on the East Side. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Dominguez?
This is a good time, then, to remind Ms. Romero and anyone else who may be listening tonight. There’s a listening workshop at the Franklin Center at 6 o’clock to 7:30. And Jessica Grant, who’s our supervising transportation planner, will be there to listen to the comments of the community related to walking, biking, traffic, parking, lighting, parkway trees, a whole host of things related to traffic, transportation, and infrastructure. So, please attend tonight at 6:00 if you can. Thank you.
And Ms. Romero, if you can’t, Holly can make an appointment or let you know how to get ahold of Ms. Grant or the traffic engineer. Thanks, Mr. Dominguez, for that suggestion. Michael Baker, you’re next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Michael Baker, CEO, United Boys and Girls Clubs. I just wanted to share a couple things with you. First of all, the West Side Club is growing tremendously with even more kids coming on a daily basis. We’re very excited about that, and the commercial kitchen is getting used on a daily basis. I did want to share with you and thank you all for setting up the ceremony for our kids that are our gold card recipients. They’re going to be coming here on October 22nd. That’ll be the second-to-last time that we do this this year, and then we do it in December typically. But as a reminder, for those of you that aren’t familiar with that program, we know from national studies in Boys and Girls Clubs across the country that if we can get a child to attend a Boys and Girls Club 105 days in the same calendar year, they’re twice as likely to graduate high school on time and twice as likely to lead a healthy lifestyle. So, we’ve really embraced that, and many of you on the dais have participated in our activities before. What we do at the Boys and Girls Clubs, United Boys and Girls Clubs, all of our clubs across the county, is we make sure that we celebrate it every step of the way. So, when a child attains 52 days that they’ve gone to the Boys and Girls Club, we have what we call a silver card ceremony. We give them special privileges. And then, when they get to that magic number of 105 days, we have what we call a gold card ceremony. We give them their gold cards. Many of you in the room here have helped present those. And that gets them special privileges at the Boys and Girls Club. But that’s the big goal right there. We actually take it one step further, and a couple of you have participated in this as well before. At our annual meeting, we actually give out blue cards to the children who have attended 200 days or more. I’m happy to report that at this ceremony coming up on October 22nd, the evening ceremony, we will have 30 children here from the West Side Club that will be receiving their gold cards. So, again, I want to thank you for setting that up. It’s a big deal for our kids. A lot of them really look forward, they all, not a lot of them, they all look forward to coming to City Hall. They think it’s really, really cool to come here. So, again, I want to thank you for your continued support and encourage you to come down to the club if you haven’t been there in a while. We’d love to see you down there. Thanks.
All right. Thanks for your good work, Mr. Baker. Jose Arturo Gallegos. Ben White, after you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, it’s almost eight years ago, be eight years to the middle of this month, that I came back home to Santa Barbara from Phoenix, Arizona, as a homeless individual. And what I have seen and witnessed, as you all know, just, it was a nightmare out in the streets. When I started hearing about the problems and the issues that the homeless people, you know, were causing here in Santa Barbara, as a homeless individual, I supported not just the business owners with their problems and their issues, but as well as the residents. What I’m going to address today, what I had found out, that the city of Santa Barbara, and I’ve heard this from various people, Santa Barbara, the city of Santa Barbara, is not a business-friendly city. I know somebody that owns a commercial building. I’m not going to say where. They have a few tenants. They have a storefront. At one time, it went through different changes as far as restaurants were concerned. I remember as a kid, it was a beer joint when I was growing up here. This individual has tried, has tried to get... This individual can note, has tried, has tried to get a restaurant going in their business there. And even several individuals have said, "We would like to lease out your storefront to open up a restaurant." "I can't do it. The city will not allow me." What I had found out, that the city, the reason why, a couple of things, is, well, they need two more parking spaces, and they need another handicap space. There is no room. I have noticed that some of these restaurants, there's hardly any parking on the property, street parking only, not enough room. And this person is being backlash'd, because they have come here, city council, city planning commission, ABR, opposing so many different things. As a matter of fact, just recently, they told me that they got a complaint from somebody that they were working inside their empty storefront. And so they called this person, called the city, and said, "Yeah, we did a complaint, but don't worry." And even this, whoever this person who works for the city says, "Yeah, the city, they pick and choose. They're nitpicking who can open up, you know, a restaurant. This has got to stop. Treat everybody fairly." Ms. Councilmember Rouse, I remember when you took over Paradise Cafe, and you were struggling with the city about the neon sign. I didn't know you back then, and I had no idea, but I backed you up.
Your time is up, Mr. White.
Yeah, so I backed you up on that, even though I didn't know you.
Okay. Mr. White, are you here? I won't take any more slips. I don't think any more are coming in, but thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Good.
You're in there.
Oh, I didn't hear.
I'm just not receiving any new ones.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. White, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I won't be long. I wanted to touch on the subject of the meeting that we had last night pertaining to 15 South Aliso's. I just heard last night that they may consider requiring a conditional use permit. Before this, I've been told that it wasn't necessary. So I'm hoping that they do consider the conditional use permit. The property is not poorly designed for this sort of thing in many, many different ways. There's no parking. Soon, they're going to put a bike path there, they're going to close one lane of the street, and so it will eliminate all parking on one side of the street. I don't know when that goes into effect, but it's in the near future, I believe. And anyway, I happen to own a duplex next door to this, and which I rent, and I use the income from my wife and I to live. And both my tenants have told me they're going to move. If, when, if and when the Salvation Army moves in, they're moving. I don't know what I will do. How would you advertise a place for rent next door to Salvation Army? Think about it. I think about the children in the neighborhood, right across the street from 15 South Aliso's, there's a family, Adam and Rosa Venegas, they have twin daughters, eight years old. I see the little girls playing in the front yard, I see them walk to school. The school is a short, it's almost exactly three blocks from that site. And they say they'll have to move. And they're worried, because they say the value of their property will go down, so they're going to get less money when they sell it, and they're going to have a difficult time getting into another place in Santa Barbara. Another family there that I know very well, David Kruger and his wife, they have four children. Their property backs up to this property, their back fence will be approximately 20 feet from this building that's proposed to go in there. So I hope you will seriously think about, especially this conditional use permit, and I thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez, I see your light on, but I did want to ask Mr. Casey, or maybe you know what the process is. This project, I think, is going to ABR, and so it's our Architectural Board of Review, but, okay, so.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we still don't have a full project description to understand how the project would need to be processed, so it's premature to talk about what that process would be.
Okay, so they haven't filed a project application yet. That's important. Mr. Dominguez, your comment, or?
Yeah, two questions. There was a pretty big turnout last night, as some of the speakers have alluded to. If it does end up at ABR, what are the options that the city has in terms of having sessions in the evening, or if at all possible, closer to the community for ease of community engagement? We're here.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'd have to work with ABR staff. There are unique qualities about the David Get Hard Public Meeting Room for doing design review board meetings, such that plans can be seen both by those in attendance and those on TV, that makes moving an ABR meeting challenging. So I don't want to give the impression that it's going to be easy to move the meeting. Looking at the timing to make sure it's accessible, once the project is able to come forward, we can talk about doing that. ABR meetings tend to go well into the afternoon, so putting it on like the last item towards the end of the day is something we could certainly think about doing.
Great, thank you. And the second question is, this is, I guess, the second time something of this category has come in front of the city. We have the tiny homes. And I'm wondering if, as a council, I know Mr. Gutierrez was there last night as well and witnessed the community meeting, if there's something we could do as a council to kind of head off these instances where there's a perceived conflict between the zoned land use and the type of project being proposed. And the idea that came to my mind was to create a homelessness committee, and I think I may have mentioned this before, and one of the tasks of that homeless committee could be proactive. In other words, figure out the type of homeless shelters or housing projects, there's an entire spectrum, and figure out what land use they'd be most compatible with, and kind of create a priority list, so that if someone like the Salvation Army comes forward and they're able to get financing, we can point them, depending on the specs of their project, because they're all, it's a spectrum, and they're all really different in terms of the people they help, the funding they have, whether there's onsite help, or even like the question Mr. White had, do they need a CUP? These are things that can be ironed out way in advance and can facilitate this. So I'm curious if there's any interest from my colleagues.
What I'm worried about, Mr. Dominguez, is this is not on the official agenda, and if, there's already been a lot of discussion. So why don't we talk afterwards, or have a meeting with Mr. Casey? And for the people who are listening, we'll discuss this idea. And that's a separate idea from the actual project that might come forward.
So my concern?
But we really shouldn't talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Well, obviously, I don't want to make any decisions today, since that's not on the agenda, but we're allowed under California state law in our charter to put things on our future agendas, and that's exactly what I'm proposing, that we put on.
Right, and what we usually do is we do a two-person memo. We've had this discussion before, so you might find one of us who would put it on the agenda, or, thank you.
I'm just bringing it up, because it hasn't happened, and this is the second time, and it creates, there was a huge amount of tension and stress last night. So I'll just make the motion, and I've had a couple interns this summer, I had a law student from Beilefeld, and an intern from Claremont McKinnon, they actually looked at the homeless problem, they came up with a couple prototypes. So I'll make the motion, and if there's no interest from council, I'll just do it on the side, a not-city-related thing, if that's the preference. But I'll make a motion that we create, we have a staff bring to us options on a homelessness committee like they have in Oxnard, and.
I'm really concerned.
That's my motion.
That a newspaper article is going to come out, that the city council did this and did that, and this wasn't on the agenda. I feel like there's already been too much discussion about it, Mr. Dominguez. But, I mean, you've made a motion.
Well, we have a city attorney here. Why don't you ask him if we're within the bounds of the law?
Mr. Parliamentarian, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the Brown Act allows only brief responses to comments from the public. There's not a lot of case law. I'm looking at the timer, you're two minutes into it. The council's rules do allow a two-person memo to bring new issues in front of the council. And to put this in context for the public, you have to have a system to figure out what the agenda is going to be. And it would be impossible to take every great idea that came from the public and just throw it on today's meeting agenda. So the Brown Act limits you, so that you're required to publish an agenda 72 hours in advance of when you're going to discuss the issue, so that the public can come participate. Having said that, your rules also are silent on whether a two-person vote from the dais can be allowed. I've interpreted that, consistent with my predecessors, to allow the council to make a motion from the dais to schedule a discussion in the future. So if in the future you want to discuss how to have additional notice for whatever it is we're talking about, I'm not sure what's being proposed at 15 South Aliso's at this point. If you wanted to have that discussion, in the past, you have had two-person votes at a meeting.
Right, and we've tried to have some discipline about that, but you've made a motion, and I don't hear a second? So let's go ahead and finish this discussion, and we'll take it up another time, Mr. Dominguez. Did you have something to say, Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. I'd be glad to talk to you about your idea after the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Piper White, you're next. You may be on the same subject, but thank you. We're happy to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. I strongly oppose the project at 15 South Aliso's. Once you guys figure out the zoning, we'll talk about that, but really, it's a common sense issue. If you've been to the site, the street is residential, there's elderly people, there's children, it's like old school. The kids still ride their bikes around the block. It's beautiful. The county Development Department did not state on the public notice that this was a housing-first program for the Salvation Army. It was really, really sneaky how that happened. Okay, so someone found out a week before all this was going to ABR Architectural Review. Thank God, we got hold of the information, and as a community pulled together to notify each other. Last night's meeting was a big waste of time for a lot of people. It was them selling themselves, cherry picking their questions. It was just ridiculous. I think that there should be some limit on if you're going to have a meeting, know your facts, have something really to deliver to the community. It is a working community, so people were struggling to get off work to make it there. I mean, once again, common sense. Thank you.
Thanks. Anna Marie Gott, followed by Ren Strong, and Ben Romo will be our final speaker. Thank you.
They just, uh? It's still not there. There you go. Okay. Good afternoon, City Council. This is about 15 South Aliso's. This is not what it, actually, the Salvation Army claims that the project is going to be. They said, "Oh, it's going to be supportive housing." People are going to have been through a process before they actually get a room, right? This is the quote from the Santa Barbara Housing Authority in their support of the project. "The occupants of the proposed units will be selected through Santa Maria, Santa Barbara County's Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System." Sounds great, right? "And in accordance with the core practices and components of California's housing-first policy." Do any of you know what that means? You probably don't. "The housing-first is an approach to quickly and successfully connect individuals experiencing homelessness to permanent housing without preconditions and barriers to entry such as sobriety, treatment, or service participation requirements. Supportive services are offered to maximize housing stability and prevent returns to homelessness as opposed to addressing predetermined treatment goals prior to permanent housing entry." That means, the homeless person that you see on the corner tonight could be in one of those bedrooms tomorrow. There was going to be no oversight. There wasn't going to be security, there wasn't going to be someone living on the property. It was going to be 14 people who have not been through a program, who have no requirements other than they get a bed and they've agreed to housing. Period. That is it. For three weeks, I have been to the Community Development Director, Development Department, excuse me. Three weeks, I have been told. It does not require a conditional use permit, and it is a use-by-right, there's nothing you can do about it. Three weeks. Until sometime around 4:00 yesterday afternoon, I got an email. And let me just show you one of the properties that they touted last night at the meeting. Do you see?
You have 20 seconds.
Do you see where the red is? The red is where their supportive housing is, in Bell. Look where the residents are. This is what I got from, this is the email I got from George Buell last night.
Your time is up, Ms. Gott.
At this time, the application for the subject properties has not been deemed complete.
Your time, your time's up. Thanks. It's not fair to let you go on when we cut off other people, but thanks, we get your point.
Yeah, there's no vetting.
Mr. Strong, you're next. Thanks.
Hello, 20th time, 21st time this year and last. My name is Ren Strong. Usually I talk about climate engineering 5G, which I still do not consent to, millimeter microwave energy. But what I'm going to talk about is about transformation. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez, for bringing up what your topic is. I am homeless, or one of. I say it's society, I have society-trets syndrome by this, the capitalism that doesn't work in the system of why you see the homeless people the way they are, and why they keep, you're going to have more and more because of this system. So what I'm proposing is a solution that we transform, which I've been talking about it since Habitat for Humanity purchased the property I lived on, on Cannon Perdi though, because I talked to the vice president and said it needed to be a community center, or at least a small one. And I said, "Actually, the big one needs to be at the National Guard Armory," which right now I found out is, or found out it's owned by the school, which is government. But as the kids look across the street from the Boys and Girls Club of America, since we have gentlemen here, and across from the middle school and from the high school, they look at war. And I'm putting out that we make that a super-community center for all the people. So if there's any national disaster, it's going to be we, the people, that actually can help serve, protect, and know each other. And so that will also help heal the homeless problem, which another thing I'm going to bring up, and I'm grateful, because I am going to be going to, and my intention is, unless I get arrested for some reason, walking out the door. And again, I apologize for last week's F-word. The other thing is, is yes, about being on this coalition, if you will, is it's very important. One of the things is, I am a permaculture designer. My business partner is a soil scientist, as I mentioned last, or two weeks ago, two Tuesdays ago. We wanted to grow food locally, and that's what I'm going to propose. I talked to Super Rica just about the land right next to them, which is their land, and I guess it's Chumash, so we'll have to figure that out. But instead of building, we grow food locally, which will stop a lot of the GMO food coming in, big oil, help for climate change, and help bring people together. And the homeless don't have to get it. By the way, I'm staying at the Father Virgil's place there, or I go and get free food. But unfortunately, they do a really beautiful job, beautiful people working there, and I'm grateful to have that conversation. But they still are putting in GMO food, people are bringing in GMO food, which is Roundup being sprayed on our food. So, yeah, please get ahold of socialearthjustice@gmail.com. Ren Strong, thank you. Ren Strong, thank you.
Mr. Ben Romo is our final speaker. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I wanted to come. I attended last night's meeting about the Aliso Street project and found it to be frustrating on many levels. I support the project conceptually very much. I feel like we have so few opportunities to do anything of significance in terms of addressing the housing crisis in general, but then we also have so few opportunities to address our... the challenges that we face as a community with helping people who are living without homes, and most of whom who are living with mental illness. And this is an excellent model, and I feel like, frankly, the Salvation Army did a really poor job of explaining what it is and portraying it for what it can be. I don't know whether a CUP is, you know, is appropriate in this setting. I tend to fall on the side of saying, these are homes for people, and just like any other home for a person, I wouldn't want to live in a home with a CUP. I wouldn't want restrictions on how I lived in my home. But I know that there are concerns, and I think it's important that for the nonprofit programs, for the government agencies that are supporting these programs and running these programs, they should try to make accommodations to try and address some of those community concerns. Some of them are valid, but the job was not well-done portraying this program. In reality, there are dozens of... well, I don't know about dozens, but there's at least a dozen of these permanent supportive housing programs throughout our community, in the city, in the city of Galita, and we just don't know about it because it's simply implemented in a way where it's implemented with fidelity, and with strength, and with support. And I think, you know, we ought to look at maybe 24-hour staff presence in that facility, which is a model that other organizations use. I just feel that the suffering that people are going through, you know, I mean, we tend to focus on the real negative, things that we see on the street. I hear so often, you know, things about aggressive panhandlers, and drunks, and drug addicts, and I just feel it's so dismissive of humanity. And we just forget the little old lady who's mentally ill and has been on the street for 20 years, and a program like this can really help that person. So, you know, it's super tough. I really felt for those residents yesterday, and I felt like... I didn't speak, because I'm not a neighbor, but by God, if you can put one of these in my neighborhood, I will be out there protesting for it with my neighbor, Councilwoman Friedman, and advocating for it, because I think it's what we all need to do to create part of the solution. Thank you.
Time is up. Thank you. So that closes public comment, and we'll move on to consent calendar. Ms. Clerk, do you have some items to read for us? Thank you, everyone, for coming today.
Item two, introduction of ordinance for lease agreement with Sen Seeker Engineering, Inc. Recommendation, the council will introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a lease agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Sen Seeker Engineering, Inc., a California corporation for 10,880 square feet of office and light manufacturing space at 100 Frederick Lopez Road at Santa Barbara Airport for a term of five years with a five-year option to extend. Item three, adoption of zoning ordinance text amendments pertaining to the zoning information report program. Recommendation, the city council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Title 28, Chapters 28.87 and 28.92 by the amendment of Section 28.87.220, and the repeal of Section 28.92.130, and amending Title 30, Chapters 30.200, 30.205, and 30.285 by the amendment or repeal of various sections pertaining to zoning information reports. Item four, resolution authorizing Federal Bureau of Reclamation grant application for advanced metering infrastructure. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the Public Works Director to submit an application and commit the city to the financial and legal obligations associated with receiving funding under the Federal Bureau Reclamation Water Smart, Water and Energy Efficiency Grants Program.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon, go ahead on item three, which has been read, the CIR issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we may pull item three to vote on separately.
Right. So can I have a motion on item three? I'll be voting against it as well.
Move item three.
Second.
Okay. So that was Dominguez. Harmon, it sounded like. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
No.
And Mayor Maria?
No. So that passes five to two with Sneddon, Maria dissenting. If there's no further discussion, I'll waive further reading, and we'll go ahead and move the rest of the consent calendar forward. A motion from Harmon, seconded by Sneddon, all in favor. Aye. Okay. We're done with the consent calendar. That moves us to our main item, number 15. Ms. Clerk?
Item 15, city prosecutor enforcement overview.
So we have our slides, and will you do it from the podium, then? Okay. Welcome.
Just making sure it worked.
Hi, I'm Denny Way. I'm the Assistant City Prosecutor, new prosecutor with the City Attorney's Office. Our office has presented a slide for everyone, and it is our pleasure and our honor to present this to you all. So I'll start the slide.
Let Paul guess. Would you advance the slide, Denny?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we'll do some brief introductions, just to let the council and community familiarize themselves. We'll talk about the special powers and duties of the prosecutor. We kind of wear a different hat when we're in that role. And we'll talk about what we think prosecution means. Now, you'll see that we're going to talk about priorities towards the end of the presentation. That's not the only part of this that can be interactive. So this is really an introduction that goes back a couple of years to the council deciding that you wanted to invest in an enforcement program, and that's what we've done. Let me advance the slide, Denny? Thank you. So Denny is really our newest addition, starting in June. And when he started, I asked Denny to create a prosecution division and be prepared in October to let the council know what that's going to look like. So we will do that. About a year ago, August of 18, William Alva joined us. He's our investigator and has functioned on a lot of, not just the prosecution, but also on our personnel investigations. And Amy Scott is our newest addition. She's our litigation paralegal who's supporting the prosecution unit. Denny, go ahead.
So the power to prosecute comes from the city charter.
Get nice and close to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, I appreciate it. The power to prosecute comes from our city charter. It's Section 703, which provides the city attorney with the power to prosecute all violation of the charter and the city ordinances. The way the charter is written, if the council wishes to deal with state misdemeanor, they may elect to do so in the future. And also, the city attorney's office and the city attorney has the power to abate nuisances through civil, enforcement of civil actions under our municipal code through ordinance. The objective of our prosecution unit will be to have fair, reliable, and effective code enforcement, be accessible to and to communicate with a diverse community with diverse needs, to act as a liaison with the police department and other city enforcement staff, courts, and county service agencies, to provide training for city enforcement staff, and provide public education. One of the important things is to educate the public about what our laws are, and so that they can comply with them, so we can all comply with the rules of our city.
I mentioned earlier, when we were getting ready, and at the risk of being a little too colorful, we kind of think of the municipal code as a book of promises to the community and between the community about how we want to behave. And I know that Councilmember Dominguez will remember from international law that you can create law with treaties, kind of what you do with writing laws, or by custom. And I would like to think that most of the enforcement that we do will be enforcing customs that the community is aware of, they've been educated about, and really represent what they like to do. But our ethical duties are pretty critical to understand, because when we're in this prosecutor role, we're wearing a different hat, and we have three duties that go together. One, impartiality. Two, independence. And third, and most important, to do justice. Independence means that I can't meet with the city council in closed session to discuss a criminal case. I can't take direction from the city council on who to prosecute. The manner in which the city council is authorized to control what we do in prosecution is through the budget. So you may choose to fund or defund various kinds of activities, not unlike what the voters did with the initiative measure that made marijuana enforcement the lowest law enforcement priority in Santa Barbara some years ago. Now, I would have thought that was a very simple proposition before the cracky case. Question whether or not we have some additional baggage, but I do feel pretty confident that you may, through the budget process, establish priorities and goals for our office. The next one, you know, one of the fun parts about law is that a term will be used, and then there's 50 pages of definitions for the two-word phrase. The state bar rules have a comment that just rings the bell, that our responsibility is to be a minister of justice. We're not there with the goal of a zealous advocate to crush the opposition. We're there to assure that justice is done. And with what we do with neighborhood enforcement and nuisance behaviors in public, justice is really multi-dimensional, and I know the council's aware of that, but we're aware of it as well, meaning that there are many factors that go with unwanted behavior that we're trying to regulate that are need to be taken into account when we're doing our Very quickly, I just want to talk about what's new. Why we're blowing the horn on this now is that the council's basically tripled the amount of resources we have available for enforcement. And, next slide? You can see that in comparison of the budget years. You'll see that before these changes, code enforcement was around 5% of our budget. It's now up around 16%. And where that money's come from is out of the advisory group. Now, recognize that these position figures vary week to week or month to month. You'll see Tava Osteringer and Sarah Connect in the audience. Tava shut down illegal pot shops back when the federal government was in that business doing code enforcement. John Doymus, who's not here, is active in code enforcement. So our division structure is loose, because as professionals, we cross lines within the office all the time. Next slide.
And to introduce our investigative function is our bilingual city attorney investigator. He is an experienced law enforcement professional. He has worked and supported and guided enforcement field work with other enforcement staff. He has conducted internal investigations under the direction of the city attorney. His name's William Alva. Mr. Alva?
Thank you, Denny. All right.
Welcome, Mr. Alva.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, pleasure to be here. Bilingual investigator. To tell you more about it, I was born in Chicago, Illinois, and I grew up, actually, in Mexico City. The Oscars are in Mexico City with my family. I completed my elementary school, junior high school, part of high school in Mexico. So to say that I'm a bilingual, it's a great title, but I think I've learned the culture, the language, and the history of that country. That's part of who I am. My law enforcement experience, I joined the Navy when I came back from Mexico, aged close to 18. I served in the Navy as a CB. I'm not sure if anybody knows about them. Local, he's a construction battalion for the Navy. I was an electrician, served for about 10 years, got hired with the Ochsner Police Department following that. I served there for several years, too, and have the pleasure of working here with Ariel, Denny, Amy, and the rest of the team. Based on the experience that I've had, I've investigated several critical incidents as a police officer. I'm also a licensed investigator with the state of California, so I've done the private work on criminal defense, so I know how things operate. I have extensive experience on criminal and civil investigations, and I've used those tools to assist our code enforcement staff from community development, waters and creeks, fire department, to guide them better in how to properly document our code enforcement cases. And for the internal investigations, I've, you know, enforced our city policies, our charters, and work hand-in-hand with human resources in ensuring that these investigations are done properly and properly documented. Like I said, I'm very proud to be part of this community and working with the city attorney's office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that.
It's been great working with William. He is an invaluable resource and has helped me out on the field in numerous cases, helping me translate. And so I'm very grateful that he's here and to help with the prosecution of cases in our Other teams that are involved in code enforcement in the city of Santa Barbara include the police department. The police department has cases which include alcohol violations. They also have vicious dog violations that we help with, also with the seizure of abused animals. The police department also deals with noise violations and other quality-of-life violations that they have to deal with, including the very serious crimes that they deal with also. So it's... I have the... I had the pleasure and the opportunity to work with that department and the great officers in that department. We've also worked with the other involved code enforcement teams in the city include the fire department. They have an investigative unit. I've worked with them as well. They do the investigation of fire code violations, and also violations of not having the proper fire deterrent devices, or not providing enough access to certain locations or certain living areas. We've worked with them on that. Zoning enforcement deals with many of the code violations in the city, from improper placement of things on the property, storing inoperable vehicles on the property, other types of zoning violations they are responsible for. Building and Safety is also another enforcement division within the city that deals with substandard housing and substandard buildings. Environmental Services deals with cases involving illegal dumping, and also with maintenance of the dumping trash containers and making sure that environmental waste or other things aren't placed in our trash system. Public Works, we've worked with to ensure that no one has illegally hooked up into our water supply or other supplies. Creeks Division deals with violations within the creeks. There's Airport Patrol, Harbor Patrol, and Park Rangers. So we have a lot of different enforcement teams in the city. Expected case distribution, we believe that police department and zoning enforcement, it will take up about 25% of our cases each. So they'll take up together half the cases, and the remainder, Fire and Building and Safety, Fire Department, Environmental Services, Public Works, Creek Division, Airport Patrol, Harbor Patrol, and Park Rangers will take up the rest. So 70% for Building and Safety, 10% for the Fire Department, 10% for Environmental Services, 5% for Public Works, 5% for creeks, 1% for airport, 1% for harbor, and 1% for Park Rangers. That's our estimate. Now, how are we going to use our time to enforce the code? And this is an estimate of how we're going to use that time. Filing pleadings with the court, motions with the court, dealing with motions and responding to motions, dealing with discovery, and going through, or for William, preparing reports and going through reports. We anticipate about 30% of our time will be dealing with that. The other 30% will be office hearings. I'm going to talk about that when we get to the next slide. Time in the field will be about 20%, and time in court will be about 20%. The current caseload, based on our data system, is 86 open code enforcement cases. The current caseload, based on our data system, is 86 open code enforcement cases. There are 248 open vacation rental cases. We are working actively with both zoning enforcement and the finance department in developing a strategy to handle these cases. We are taking a proactive enforcement approach to all violations of our municipal code dealing with vacation rentals in non-coastal zones. In coastal zones, because of the cracky case, we will be enforcing those cases where there is a complaint on the property, so it's complaint-driven. There's 37 open criminal prosecutions. Many of those are on warrant status, so many times for these criminal prosecutions, a defendant will not appear in court. The court will issue a warrant for their arrest, and then we wait for them to come back to court. When they do come back to court, we have been successful in obtaining criminal protective orders, and I'll talk more about that, to order them to stay away from areas where they repeatedly violate our ordinances. And we have two nuisance abatement cases, two open nuisance abatement cases. These are the civil cases. The two cases involve the same general criminal defendant. So what tools do we have to enforce our codes? The agreement that we have in the city, the agreement that we have with, as a community that we agree to. The tools we have are first, field inspections. We go to the field, we meet with the property owner, we clearly identify what the violations are, and we set a timeline to make sure that they comply with these violations. Since I've been here, Mr. Alva and I, and sometimes, many times, accompanied by either someone from zoning enforcement, or Building and Safety, or both, and sometimes even Public Works, we've gone out to the property, identified what the problems are, set a timeline, and expect them to comply. We've, we're pretty successful, you know, we've only started doing this about three months ago, but so far, everyone has met their timeline, which is, which is good. So we've gone out, inspect on the field, clearly identified what the problems were, letting the property owner know who to contact, who in the city they need to speak with, and then setting a timeline for them to comply. Another mechanism, another tool we have are office hearings. And office hearings are hearings where we invite people to our office. We clearly spell out what the violations are. We clearly tell them what we expect them to do and when we expect them to do it. And we tell them about the consequences of not doing it, and if they don't comply, then we can take further steps. So we've, since I've been here, conducted well over 20 office hearings so far, and we haven't yet had a case where someone has violated the terms they agreed to in an office hearing. Inspection warrants. Another tool to gain compliance to our codes is the use of inspection warrants. Since I've been here, we've already obtained one inspection warrant. An inspection warrant can be used two ways. The first way is if we have probable cause to believe that there is a violation of the code, we can obtain an inspection warrant to get onto the property, to collect evidence to prove it in court. So that's one of the purposes of an inspection warrant. The inspection warrant can also be used to correct the violation. So we can ask the court, please give us permission to clean up the property. We can go in there under the inspection warrant and clean up the property. However, we would have to pay for that, pay for the cleanup, if we do that. So if we obtain an inspection warrant to clean up the property, we would have to pay for the cleanup and try to collect it later on the property. Another tool we have is criminal prosecution, which is allowed under the charter. Criminal prosecution of the case, most of our violations are misdemeanors unless in our municipal code it states that it's an infraction. If we do choose criminal prosecution, we weigh all the facts. We consider how much, how often this person has violated our ordinances, how many chances they've had to comply, and we would only use it when it's appropriate. With criminal prosecution, you get a speedy, you quickly get access to the court, and you can quickly bring the person to court. We can start a case and get the person in court within three weeks. And usually, we can have their arraignment within three weeks or so. With criminal prosecution comes the power to get a criminal stay-away order under Penal Code Section 136.2. And with that stay-away order, we can have a person who, for example, commits a crime in a particular area and continues to commit that crime in that area, we can, we can get an order for that person to stay away from the area. In addition, there's a thing known as diversion in criminal courts, which allows a criminal case to be suspended, to make sure that the person complies, and if the person complies, then we can dismiss that case. So that's also another tool if criminal prosecution is used. Another tool that we use, another tool that we have are gun violence restraining orders. We work closely with the police department in dealing with that. When the police department goes to the scene and believes that they should get a gun violence emergency protective order, our office, I would go in and represent our office in trying to, when appropriate, obtain a longer order. Receiver ships are also civil proceedings that we're authorized to do, and we can pursue if appropriate. Civil nuisance abatements are the civil remedies, civil cases that we can file in civil court to compel someone to comply by charging, by threatening them with civil penalty if they, if they don't, if they don't comply. We have mediation, which is for situations where you have neighbors that have problems with each other. They have concerns of the other neighbor that don't rise to the level of a potential code violation, but we provide the ability for them to get them in the same room, to have them discuss the problem, see if they can come to consensus or to come to an agreement. We're also responsible for dealing with workplace violence restraining orders. One was filed just recently, a little over a week ago, so we deal with that. We deal with the vicious dog hearings. Once the animal shelter, once the animal control determines that a dog is a vicious dog, we deal with the process in court. And also, we deal with any appeals to the administrative citations. So these are the tools that we have in our unit to ensure the enforcement and the compliance of our, of our code.
So we've got a big old toolkit, and I want you to tell us how to use it. What we're doing currently is, up on the slide, safe housing is clearly an enforcement obligation that's in the housing element along with municipal code, so it takes on a larger stature in, in my mind, anyway. Nuisance behaviors, I think the phrase "public space protection" is really the way I think of nuisance behaviors. There is a, something like a tragedy of the commons problem when certain people or groups essentially take over public spaces to the exclusion of others. So nuisance behaviors can range from anything to open containers of alcohol. It can be ARSET lie ordinance in areas where there's congestion. And certainly, it can be the unlawful behaviors associated with encampments, when there are unlawful behaviors. Third, short-term vacation rental enforcement, that's been part of the portfolio since 2015. And for lack of a better rubric, I put landlord-tenant under what I call consumer protection. And we have a few of those laws, but I think that's really the category we're talking about, whether and when the city will involve itself in the economic marketplace to try and address an imbalance or other perceived problem. So that's a simple short list. I would be happy to hear from the council, and I know that Denny, William, and Amy would be happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, Mr. Way. Mr. Rouse, why don't you go ahead and start with questions? We do have some public comment speakers, so if you could remember to save comment for after.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Way, as we went through the list, and we just started talking about some nuisance behavior enforcement, and I know that at one point in time, I know Mr. Doymas is not here, but we were talking about the Solutions Court. I was wondering if how, how and if this dov, if your efforts dovetail with that new effort at all?
Yes, our office has been working with the district attorney's office to engage stakeholders to duplicate the success Solutions Court has had in North County. So Solutions Court is in existence in North County, and we have been trying to get it started and developed in South County. We've been working with Gordon Alchenkloss. I apologize to Gordon if I pronounce his name wrong. He may, he may be, he may be watching this.
Gordon works.
Oh, sorry. Gordon sent me an email yesterday, just, sent our office an email yesterday just to kind of letting us know, you know, we, you know, what we can tell council and what's going on with Solutions Court. So I really appreciate it. And yes, it's, you know, Gordon has done a lot of hard work to try to get Solution Court off the ground. We're trying to get the stakeholders to buy in, and we will do everything we can to try to have Solutions Court here in South County.
Now, when you say stakeholders, at one point in time, I understand it was one of the blockades was kind of in the public defender's office. Is that still a bit of an issue, or is that, or is it other things like, you know, judges or what, where are we at with that? Because North County, like I say, they do seem to have it. It sounds like a great tool, it sounds like a great way to help break that cycle.
I think it's a great way to break the cycle, and I think it's a, it's a tool that we could use here in South County. I think it's, your question's a good question. I think Gordon is working with the public defender and hope to get the public defender's buy-in. I think that's the best way to say it. I, I know he's, he's working diligently.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Nedden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome. It's really nice to meet you, and we've been waiting for you, so this is exciting.
Thank you, thank you. It's really an honor to be here.
Thank you. I had just had a couple of questions before we go to public comment.
Of course.
So field inspections, are those mainly by neighbor complaint, or what would bring about a field inspection?
They're mostly done by neighbor complaints. So what happens is a neighbor would complain to either our office, or most of the time to zoning enforcement or Building and Safety. And once a complaint arises, we can, if, it depends on how long the violation's been in place, what the violation is. We'll go to the property, try to contact the property owner, and get a code enforcement official there that's responsible, or if it's multiple, as you can see, we have a lot of different agencies for code enforcement. It's scattered in a lot of different areas. So we bring all the necessary people together, we go to the property, and then we point out what the violations are, and then we clearly define what needs to be done. That's a key component of that. And then we set a reasonable timeframe for them to get it done. Reasonable, doable timeframe to get it done, but not an extended timeframe. It, you know, we expect that they need to comply with, with the code. We want them to comply with the code, and we want to make it so that they can comply with the code.
Thank you. So that answers my second question, because it seems that you're saying that we want to get to compliance and not getting to prosecuting. We want to work it through and make it doable and possible and to get there.
Correct, and that's why there's all these other tools there. And all the other tools are designed so that we can get compliance, and prosecutions are really reserved for when we've really exhausted all the other potential workable tools.
Thank you. And then I had a question about just the priorities. So the percentage pie chart of the expected case distribution, that's not a priority of cases, that's just where you expect that they'll be coming from?
Correct. Our priority will be to handle, review, enforce every single case that comes to our office. That, that is our priority. And so we want to do that. We will, our goal is to do that. But the pie chart is to break down where we think the cases will be coming from.
Thank you. And then one more question about current enforcement priorities, enforce safe housing standards. Does that include drainages from nearby yards? I know that's something we get a complaint about a lot, or in certain hillside areas, and I'm just curious where it falls in this. Would that be under safe housing, or is that more?
Well, those current enforcement priorities are an acknowledgement of council's concern about certain areas. But yes, we do enforce, we have had cases referred to us regarding that issue, and we do and will continue to enforce those type of violations.
Thank you. And I think I've definitely heard what you said about even though it's not maybe in the order number of enforcement, your priority is to get to every priority.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cologne.
I'd like to supplement Mr. Way's responses. And to, I'd like to be very candid about it. I think that the council's addition of resources in our office has filled a gap that has impacted the entire city enforcement system in ways that are hard to explain. So I believe that having Denny, William, and Amy involved the way they are will let us be much more responsive to the concerns that get raised. And I understand the situation in these terms. If I were a member of the public and I had complaints that were unheard for a period of time, and then a longer period of time, I'd grow frustrated, and I would amp up the volume. I would feel like I wasn't being heard or respected, and I would get louder and angrier. I think we've experienced some of that, and I think it's part of our job to be responsive, be prompt in our responsiveness, to bring back an expectation from the community that when they complain, they'll be heard. We won't make everybody happy, but we will be responding in a timely way. And I want to emphasize, I really feel like that's a responsibility that's been missing from our office, and I don't mean that as a criticism of any of the other enforcers. I think it's a central function that the prosecutor has to play.
And Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Snedden, it's also kind of a tiered approach. An initial complaint might come in, and zoning enforcement or Building and Safety staff will initiate the enforcement, try to get compliance that way. And when they get stuck or get in recalcitrant, that's when they can then consult with the attorney's office and kind of bring an extra emphasis to the situation. So I think that's helpful as well for everyone involved.
And one of the things Ariel has stressed, one of the things that he wants us to do, one of the things that he mandates us to do is to be fair. That's one of the important things that he stresses in our unit, be fair. And that's one thing that we will always, always do.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. Great presentation. Glad to have you all on, on board. And Mr. Cologne, thank you for, you gave me a kind of softball pitch to, maybe you kind of see where I'm going with this question. So there are very few, but there are some cases that are very complex, and they involve building and, they could involve law enforcement, Building and Safety, code enforcement, multiple agencies. And then there's also the component where the violation gets cured, and then as soon as the eyes are off, there's another violation, and it just goes on for years. Can you speak to how you would address a very, a complex case that's ongoing where they repeatedly violate, and then also when you have these multiple, sometimes there are neighbor disputes where law enforcement is also involved? And if you could just speak to how you would address some of these more complex cases?
Yes. For cases where they're, they're repeat violators. So they go and they violate, and then they would comply, and then once they comply, you know, we stop, and then they violate again, would prompt us to take, to, as, as our city administration has stated, to go up a level. So it might be necessary to place the person on some type of oversight or overview. To the most extreme cases, it might be necessary to place the person on probation to ensure that they comply. So it all depends on the seriousness of the violation, the danger to the community, and how, how much has the person tried to comply with our codes? So that's the approach that we would take. We wouldn't take a heavy-handed approach. We're always, again, guided by Ariel's direction, always be fair. We're always, again, guided by Ariel's direction, always be fair to them. But we, we cannot and will not allow, say, a, a code violation that endangers the safety of their neighbors or a, a community to, to continue. And if, after taking measures to try to get them to comply, they, they would comply a little bit and not comply, then we may have to take stronger action. And for the most serious cases, we may have to consider probation.
So, thank you. So, we do have extra tools now that, that weren't necessarily there before or had the resources to implement before, but now we do.
Correct. We have, we have extra, extra tools that now that we have the resources to use, we can use now.
This is great news, thank you.
Yeah. And in regards to the, to the neighbor dispute, that's where the mediation comes in. And, and that, those are some of the hardest cases where neighbors, there's so much acrimony that there's a breakdown in communication. Now, if there's no code violations, we're not going to enforce on it. But we are going to offer services by helping them mediate if they're willing to do it. We can bring them into the office, get the neighbors to sit down and get them to at least try to agree. From my experience before coming to the city here, it may not always be successful, but there are times where it's enough where they can just live together. They may not like each other, they may never like each other, but they will tolerate each other. It, it's not successful in every case, but it's certainly another tool out there to help the community.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the members of the public came and spoke about parking issues that are going on in her neighborhood. It's an issue that's going on in my district as well. I get a lot of reports of work trucks being parked on city streets and taking up residential parking. What, if any, solutions would you have to dealing with that issue?
That's a, that's a, that's a very good question. There was a recent issue about parking that was brought to, to, to our office. And it involved parking by an elementary school. Our code allows for the towing of vehicles if they are in a zone designated by, by resolution. So, we will work with law enforcement, with the police department, with, with, with parking to ensure that our parking laws are complied with. And we will advise them on what the laws are when, and, and what our restrictions are when appropriate. But we, it is something that we know is important. It's important to the community. And it's not something we take lightly or would take lightly. And we will work with police and with parking in, in, in trying to ensure enforcement of our codes.
Mr. Cologne, something to add?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Gutierrez, the options for enforcing on parking are pretty limited. Parking violations are decriminalized. We do have an ordinance that requires people to use what parking they may have, carports, garages. This is an area where I think public education is the way to handle it. So, I would, if we were asked to get involved with this as a priority, I would start by letting the neighborhood know that your garage is supposed to be used for cars, not storage, because that's often a problem. You'll need to weigh how popular an enforcement process that will be.
Mr. Cologne, I, I thought that there was a rule that you could have two work trucks, but not three. And I was, looked at Mr. Casey, okay, so that, yeah, that, there's plenty of work trucks parked on city streets, especially on the west side.
Madam Mayor, the oversized vehicle ordinance allows for commercial permits for people that do business. And if I remember right, the council discounted the second and greater permit. So, I think it was 100 a year and 50 per vehicle after that, if I'm remembering right. So, it was fairly, it, it, the, the point of the oversized vehicle ordinance was not to put people out of business. So, you did accommodate quite a bit of parking through city-issued permits. We could get data for you, if you'd like, on how many of those permits are out there. I don't, I don't know off the top.
I, I'm, I'm concerned because from what I witnessed and what residents are saying is that they, they witness a car drive up to a work truck and somebody gets out, gets into that work truck and drives off. And they don't recognize the person. It's not like the person lives there. So, it seems as if they're driving in from somewhere else and parking their work truck in that neighborhood and then leaving at the end of the night. So, I'm all for if the people live in the neighborhood to park their work trucks if they live there. But when I'm hearing reports of outside work trucks being parked in residential areas, that's where the residents get upset and, and I get concerned as to how our city streets are being used as parking lots for other resident, or I don't even know if the residents of the city or, or what. But I was just wondering, is it something where issuing permits could be a solution? And, and what's, what's that process like?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, I, Rob Dayton will chop my head off if I start talking about parking permits. So, I, I, the answer is I don't know the process for the neighborhood parking permit program.
Do we have a staff person who can answer, Ms. Brook? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez. Renee Brooks, City Planner. I believe I understand the concern and the question you're raising, Councilmember Gutierrez. And typically, those are brought to zoning staff as a complaint because of, of exactly the activity you're describing. And most often, we investigate those as violations of our home occupation ordinance. Because when you get down to the heart of it, what it, what it is usually is somebody operating a business out of their home with more vehicles or specialized equipment that is not suitable for a residential neighborhood. So, they're challenging to investigate though, because you need to catch that activity actually occurring. So, it usually involves multiple site visits to try to gather the evidence. And so, so they do sometimes go on for an extended period of time. And I understand the frustration of that, when the residents who live there see it every day because they're there every morning, they see the activity. But we, that's typically the code section we're looking to enforce when we get those types of complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you. Thank you for joining the city. Definitely having been a prosecutor, I know that these are the hardest cases because, as you said, it's, you're trying to be fair and that seems really easy. But it's hard in this context where it's pitting, you know, neighbor complaints versus neighbor complaints. It's easy in felonies or in international law where people are just outrageously evil and you're doing felonies. But these infractions sometimes are even harder. So, what I want to know with regard to the ramping up of encampments with these two fires we've just had lit by homeless people near the freeways, what is it that you're going to be able to do to help us with that?
We will enforce the law in a fair manner. We'll apply it equally to, 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 to all people regardless of, 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 of. We will be fair in applying it. That's the key thing. We will also, we also have to be mindful of people's rights. So, we have to balance that in enforcing it. So, if they are violating an ordinance and, and the enforcement of that ordinance is permitted based on current case law, then we will pursue it. However, if there is constitutional limitations on it, we are, of course, mindful of that and we will always comply with our constitutional requirements. But we understand that the quality of life in the community is important to a community. It's something we, we hold and we value greatly in our office. And we will ensure that public space be accessible to people. And, but we also have to balance that with people's, people's rights. So, I, I think that's a great question. I can tell you that we will diligently and we will work hard in prosecuting those cases within the boundaries that the courts have set for us. So...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, in terms of the boundaries, we're trying to adjust those boundaries with a proposed ordinance that's coming to the Ordinance Committee October 22nd. And that's a, an ordinance that will directly regulate the storage of personal goods in public. One of the issues that we have dealing with encampments is that one person's junk is another person's collection of essential life goods. And so, the, the courts have tended to treat the property that surrounds many homeless encampments as a found item and put the city in the shoes of the finder of a lost thing that has to be held for a period of time before it can be kept as your own. So, finder's keepers is not the law. Finders give notice for a while, then you keep. So, what we're trying to do with this proposed ordinance is come to a different balance in terms of the amount of due process that's required before we can remove excessive collections of personal goods. And we're proposing to do that by more direct signposting in some of the encampment areas in hopes that we can shorten the waiting, waiting period before those encampments get cleared. So, that's, I think, the best we can hope for in this area. You'll be seeing that very shortly.
So, that's October 22nd?
Correct.
And what about the sit and lie ordinance? I know you're doing some work on that. When do we expect to see that back?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the, I, I didn't have any additional sites in mind. The council had asked that we look citywide at opportunities when we considered West, rather, excuse me, East Haley, the 0 to 100 block of East Haley. Recently, I have been contacted by path with concern about the sidewalk near the intersection of Casique and Milpas on the, I guess it's northeast, excuse me, northwest corner in particular. I need to have some help in gathering evidence about what's going on there by way of obstruction. If, if that's the case, then I will be back to the council, as you've asked us to do citywide, when the need or opportunity presents itself. The purpose of this ordinance, of course, is to prevent the sidewalks being blocked so that people can get from wherever they want to go to, to, to another point without being blocked. But we need a really solid evidentiary basis that that's the issue. We can't use the sit, lie as a proxy for camping, although the two activities often go together.
And I know the commanding officer for the local CHP, commanding officer Ponce, has been troubled. Her officers get a lot of calls, an extraordinary number of calls to that intersection. And there's actually a vehicle code ordinance that prevents soliciting within 500 feet of a freeway, which gives you a lot of latitude or gives our police and enforcement a lot of latitude because that takes you up past Jack's Bagels. And that's the northeast part of that freeway zone where there's also a lot of nuisance and criminal activity, people hiding in the bushes, which is very threatening to the passersby's. So, when do you think there will be something coming to council then from that sit and lie?
Well, I, I've received email, I believe it was from Chuck Flax, last week. I, I haven't referred it to anyone to go get me photos of what's going on at that intersection, but I'll do that shortly.
And then the, the grocery cart ordinance that's coming to us in a few weeks as well?
That's on the 15th, Councilmember Dominguez. And then on the 29th, we have two ordinances. One is our proposed response to SB 946. That was the sidewalk vending law that was intended to avoid criminalizing sidewalk vendors and thereby handing the keys to ICE for their incarceration. The second ordinance on the 29th relates to on-street vehicle vending, hot trucks and similar vending on-street. You've already regulated off-street through the new zoning ordinance.
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, just for council and for the public's understanding, those dates we were just mentioning were for the Ordinance Committee. So, the Ordinance Committee needs to vet them first before it comes. And I'll just repeat them just as they're kind of lining up. So, Tuesday, October 15th, Ordinance Committee at 12:30 PM, that's the shopping cart ordinance. Tuesday, October 22nd, at Ordinance Committee at 12:30 is the personal goods storage item. And then Tuesday, October 29th, also at 12:30 at the Ordinance Committee is the sidewalk vending and the on-street vehicle items.
They're going to be busy. Anything else, Mr. Dominguez?
Yes, the, there's been a complaint about some folks, and I don't know if this falls under the encampment scenario or the storage of personal goods, but by the county courthouse. But I think it's in the parkway and on the, on the sidewalk, which puts it into the city's domain. Do you know what the status of, of that person or those particular people are? I heard they moved on, but now I hear they're back.
Well, I, I can't address any particular case, but we've, we have been approached on, on certain cases dealing with that issue. We will enforce within the boundaries of the law and, and the case law that's been provided. But we will do what we're allowed to do in, in enforcing these type of violations. I, I can assure the, the, I was about to say court, sorry, day job. I can assure the mayor and the council members that we will do that, that we will, we, we take this seriously. We will enforce where we can. But we will always be mindful and be within the parameters set by the court regarding what we can and cannot do in, in, in dealing with these type of issues.
And the last issue is, I just received an email about sleep, people sleeping in vans around a park. What is the law and how do you enforce it with regard to that issue?
Well, I would need more facts. So, I would ask if, if there is a complaint about that, that they would contact our office. And I would be more than happy to speak with, with that citizen to get...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the Desert Rain, the cases always have these wonderful names. The, the Desert Rain case involving enforcement of Los Angeles Sleeping in Vehicles ordinance in Venice Beach held that we could not criminalize sleeping in vehicles in the context that LA did it. The LA set out on a selective enforcement plan to get rid of the homeless in Venice Beach. So, we have been very cautious about enforcing the Sleeping in Vehicles ordinance to the point that we actually, in response to that case, deleted from the code the definition of temporary recreational vehicle. What that case really didn't like was that the definition of temporary RV in Los Angeles applied to a beige Volvo wagon with a sleeping bag in the back. So, it, it literally made dad taking the kids to a sleepover a criminal. But it was only being forced against homeless people with sleeping bags and bottles of urine in the back of their car. So, we eliminated sleeping in a temporary RV as a, as a crime in Santa Barbara. And the council funded rather substantially your off-street overnight parking program with new beginnings.
So, around East Side Park, people then are allowed to sleep overnight in their vehicles?
I, I think the best...
Hang on, Denny.
Yeah, sorry.
I don't want to answer it affirmatively. All I want to say is that we took out of our code the violation of sleeping in a temporary RV. And so, that's the effect of, of that advice. There may be other violations though. So, it's, that's why I don't want to answer it affirmatively, that we're not going to address it. We will when there are other violations we can look at.
Okay. And with regard to, we've, we've had several programs come online through the city, through the non-enforcement side. Is it possible to refer that, this situation to some of the people who've received grants, some of our volunteers? And what would be the channel to do that?
Forward me the, the issue and I'll get it into the hands of the right people. We'll take a look at it, absolutely.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gutierrez has another one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When it comes to reporting gas-powered leaf blowers, how is one supposed to do that? Do they have to call 911, or is there a specific line that they call?
I would think that it would be zoning. I'm not.
That's for the PD.
Yeah.
Would you like the chief to address your question, Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, please. I've been getting a lot of questions about that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez and all, we do take gas blower calls. It's one of those that we'd prefer people to call our non-emergency number four. And we have our volunteers that are active in following up. And we have come up with a plan that has not been executed to create a separate phone line or email address so that those can be forwarded and worked in a case-like manner, mostly probably by our volunteers to work on an education piece. It's one of those that is so timely, and by the time the call gets formatted and out to officers or even volunteers, people have moved on. But what we recognize is there are gardeners that come back the next week. So, we want to make sure we get the information that's going to be able for us to follow through with more concisely and be more efficient so that we can work to educate and then take action. And if we get resistance, then that would be something we would pair up with the city attorney's office on.
Okay. So, if a resident knows that like every Tuesday at 3 o'clock, there's a gas blower that goes off, then PD would set up some sort of like stakeout?
I would, I would direct our volunteers specifically to work on that. And essentially, yes, they'd work to meet them at that time and work on the education first.
Okay. Thank you.
The gray shirts, right? And I've talked to them before, they look forward to that.
Madam Mayor, affirmative, absolutely.
So, the non-emergency number I give out is 897-2300. Is there another one that you use?
That's the perfect one to use.
Okay. 897-2300, folks, for non-emergency. And that works for a lot of things that, you know, you don't really want to call 911, but there's something you think the police could help with. Somebody was telling me they, someone built a fire in a park the other day, and that, yeah, they called the non-emergencies number, so. Thank you for that. Mr. Gutierrez, so you're good, your light is on just by mistake, Mr. Dominguez? Can, can we put the last slide up with current enforcement priority? So, a lot of the things that Mr. Dominguez brought up, I think, is number two. So, nuisance behaviors in public spaces, sleeping in your car, that kind. So, is this, because the public is going to come up, I just wanted to use this as a way to start the discussion, which you're asking for council priorities. Okay. So, if we could all take a look at, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at. We're happy to hear whatever the public is going to come up and say. I don't see any more lights, Mr. Way, so we're going to call it Mary Turley to go first. Betsy Kramer's going to give her two minutes. Anna Marie Gott getting two minutes from Jose Artero Gallegos, and then Victoria Valente last. Let me put the timer, Ms. Turley. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members, for bringing this item to the agenda. And thank you for the city prosecutor's office in the wonderful overlay, and for pointing out priority number three on the short-term vacation rentals. I'm here as part of Allied Neighborhoods Association, and we appreciate this topic appearing on the agenda for today. And we just wanted to take this opportunity, because we didn't have a chance to review this, the slide, to urge council to continue the enforcement of the illegal and unpermitted short-term vacation rentals as part of your directive to staff, including it as an enforcement priority. And again, I'm really glad to see it on the list and number three. And this, I'm just going to read this because it's got, we've got new council members, and this is a little bit of how we see things, and also factual information, just for everybody's knowledge. As you know, we have multiple zoning areas where short-term businesses are allowed use, basically all zones, where transient occupancy and hotel use is allowed, which includes commercial zones, the RH Residential Hotel Zone, and the M-C Manufacturing Commercial Zone. And folks can and need to obtain a permit to operate. We also have three residential zoning areas where short-term rentals are not allowed use. Those residential zones are single-family, R2, and R-M. The year-long comprehensive update on our zoning ordinance adopted in 2017 did not change this, so this is what stands. And I'm going to skip over, we thank you again for putting it on as a priority. Earlier in 2015, state-certified, our most recent housing element. This housing element has a chapter on housing challenges. And in that chapter is a section on vacation rentals. That section says, "Short-term vacation rentals, along with homes only occupied as second homes, pose a housing challenge because they decrease available long-term housing opportunities for local residents, as well as increase to housing costs." That section also says, "The trend of converting owner-occupied and rental units to short-term rentals has become quite popular, especially in destination communities such as Santa Barbara." And that short-term rentals in Santa Barbara have become common, especially in residential zones, although only allowed in limited zones. Short-term rental businesses are generally more profitable than renting a property to a long-term residential tenant. Long-term is defined as 30 days or more, and therefore, we need to continue enforcement of legal unpermitted vacation rentals as per our zoning ordinance. Additionally, this must be considered a housing strategy to free up additional units and ease the shortage. We are concerned about public documents from the Coastal Commission, which appeared to desire to override our local zoning in the coastal zone to allow short-term rentals. In residential zones where our current zoning ordinance does not allow them, mainly the coastal zone, which is the single-family zoned areas above Cliff Drive, Shoreline Park, and below Cliff Drive, generally from Leadbetter to the far end of the Braemar Track to the city border. This area includes hundreds of homes currently occupied as housing. Due to our lack of housing resources, we cannot afford to rezone any of our inland, non-coastal-zone residential areas that currently do not include short-term rental business as an allowed use, contrary to what you might be hearing from those operators. A quick online search reveals hundreds of illegal short-term vacation rentals currently being advertised and operating in the city of Santa Barbara. We need to continue to enforce our zoning ordinances as to permitting and location of short-term rentals, respect our residential neighborhoods, and zoning where short-term rentals are not allowed use, and prioritize housing over losing existing housing to rentals and transient businesses that are not permitted. This should be an enforcement priority, and again, thanks on that. It's been almost a year. I'm going to skip on that because you guys, it's listed as a priority. The only other question I don't have to have an answer to is, are they doing any enforcement outside of complaints? So, is there any other investigative reporting, investigation going on outside of complaints on short-term vacation rentals?
Related to short-term rental, okay. Thanks, Ms. Turley.
Thank you very much for being here.
Okay. Ms. Gott? Do you need to plug in?
Yeah, just a sec. So, council members, we have problems with short-term vacation rentals, and I think you know that. Mary just mentioned that we have hundreds of illegal short-term vacation rentals. Here is a tiny snapshot of Santa Barbara. We have 84 illegal short-term vacation rentals, primarily entire units operating in that tiny area. Those are places residents used to live. They now have to drive back into Santa Barbara because they can't afford to pay the rent that these people are paying on a nightly basis as tourists to sleep in their old homes. This shouldn't be about enforcement anymore, it should be about prosecution. Last year, I mentioned to you that there was a property at 1805 Chapala. They got a permit for one of the units to be turned into a short-term vacation rental permanently, without parking, which is kind of ridiculous, because it did require parking. They have two other units on the property, they both rent those out illegally. Oh, and then they've got another illegal dwelling unit under the house on the, the two-story house. So, they ran all of it out. And I could have rented it out last weekend, because no one is actually enforcing on this one, or any of the other ones I'm about to show you. How about our AUD units at 522 Garden Street? They're still operating, and they use it as an event center, too. What about 1330 Chapala? Another AUD unit, complex, at least two of them are short-term vacation rentals. There are two homes at 228 West Mitchell Trenna. They hold weddings and family reunions and bachelor parties at this location. Neighbors have complained for years, and nothing has been done. We have three homes at 112 West Mitchell Trenna that could be occupied by workers. There's another one at 1221 Chapala. This little home over on Victoria, it could also be used to rent by one of, by one person in our workforce, or family. Every single one of them is an illegal short-term vacation rental. Every single one of them has operated for years. Every single one of these owners should be prosecuted at this point. It is past time. Enforcement means nothing, because you know what they do? I'll agree, I won't rent anymore. All the ads are taken down, the next month, they're all back up. The tourists are still coming. And it's because you guys haven't increased the fines? We finally have someone after years who might do something. But my question for you, we have 800 illegal short-term vacation rentals. Do you actually think any of them are going to be shut down unless you make this a number one priority and make substantial changes? You must do more than just enforce. It is past time. They have people here that have bought new homes, actually, new apartment buildings. They have renovated the entire thing. And guess what? Tourists on the weekends are now coming. I know someone with at least 10 separate properties. None of them are where our residents are living, though they used to live there. It's your job to actually ensure that we enforce, that you do it once, and then that is the end of it. This is not something that should be going on again and again and again, and dragging out for years. And the only reason that that's happening.
10 seconds.
Is because you are not increasing the penalties, and you're not making sure that people stop. Thank you.
Victoria Valente? Okay, had to go. We'll close public comment. And, Mr. Klon, may I start with, or Mr. Way, a description of the short-term vacation rental program?
Yes.
The enforcement program?
Yes. When we talk about enforcement, that means all the tools on the table, including prosecution. So, I am working actively with zoning enforcement and finance to seek compliance on short-term If there is a violation, we will take appropriate action, including prosecution, when appropriate. One of the concerns a council member raised earlier was, how do you stop them from reoffending? If we catch that they are in violation of an agreement that they signed with us, or in violation of our code, after we have taken action with them, then we can ramp up and take more aggressive action, including filing criminal charges. So, yes, there is, we, it is something that we acknowledge is important to the community. It's something that's important to council, and it's something that we have actively, am, are still actively working to enforce. And so, we're taking steps.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Denny, Madam Mayor, let me, let me add on to that. First, I want to let the record be pretty clear that in 2015, the council spent $160,000 to accelerate short-term vacation rental enforcement, and the reward was a lawsuit from Theo Crackey in defense of vacation rentals. At that time, you also authorized the issuance of several dozen subpoenas, legislative subpoenas, which we served on the vacation rental companies. We had to litigate one of those, and we're successful in getting the records. The volume of the job is huge. Denny is not talking about the game plan we have. It involves working with the finance department to have an organized structure and priority to go down a list to get to all the cases. There are a lot of cases. You saw that on our slide. But we have it as a priority, and we're going to get to them.
And some are driven by complaint, and some by other method, come to your attention?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. The cases, in order to respect the Crackey decision, although it, the council's authorized an appeal, we are only taking complaints in the coastal zone. That means outside the coastal zone, we are looking at proactive enforcement, using all the data that we have to organize those cases.
Okay. Thank you. The floor is open to the council members to comment on this program. Go ahead, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all for this presentation. It was really enlightening, and I really appreciate seeing these priorities. So many of them, to me, are so interconnected, as you were saying. You know, safe housing is as much about landlord-tenant issues as it is about nuisance abatement. So, I really appreciate the nuanced perspective that you all take on that. I also want to express, express my appreciation to your office for how you've underscored that criminal prosecution and misdemeanor enforcement really is a last resort. To me, you have shown today, your presentation shows, that you value and prioritize and understand the power of community buy-in. And I think that's something we all love about Santa Barbara, you know, how committed we all are, regardless of district or neighborhood, to making this the best city that it can be, the most livable it can be. And I very much appreciate how your presentation today underscored that you are a partner in that effort as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, in the, in the years of observing and years of being upon council, I'd say if there were 100 people in this room that are citizens, they would probably put nuisance behaviors as number one in terms of priority, in terms of consistency and things they'd like to see enforced. One of the things that, one reason why I wrote the Solutions Court was, Solutions Court's also a bit of a statement. The statement is that we're going to start doing things slightly differently than we've been doing in the past, and that not doing the same thing over and over again, what we've done for years, you know, is a sense of message of being ineffective and not firm in our commitments. Clearly, there are going to be, you know, higher court restrictions on things we can do and how we can enforce things. But I think the focus on that, whether it's even things like noise enforcement, or, you know, whether or not it's, you know, car sleeping, which is very much of a nuance right now with the Ninth Circuit decision in LA. But still, the idea that we're going to be able to give our police force, and our ambassadors, and our other volunteers, firm, clear direction, and that'll be backed up by our legal department, I think, is really essential. And I think it's a And I think it's an essential message to send to our public as well, that we really are, we do have a bunch of ordinances, we sit up all the time and chat about this, an ordinance committee, and then, you know, sometimes it seems to vaporize, and we don't really get much out of it. Well, now it seems like we've got a clear direction, we've got the personnel to go after and actually put some teeth behind what we said we intend to do as a community. So to me, that would be the, these, everything's important. But I think, once again, our general public would look at nuisance behavior as a number one priority for, you know, what we do in the city, and that's what I would encourage us to focus on.
I don't see any other lights. Mr. Dominguez?
My colleague teed up a question, but I'm not going to ask it about a particularly controversial ordinance that was passed and how many convictions we've had. But let me go into my comments, which is, one, thanking Mr. Klon for hiring great staff members. Thank, and thank you guys and gals for coming to our city. I know you came from out of town, and I appreciate your desire to help make Santa Barbara a better place. And I want to know, are you a Pumas fan from Mexico City?
Yes.
Okay.
America, yeah.
I went to Unam, so we're going to have to have a talk. So I agree that we should prioritize the nuisance behaviors because I think it's a double whammy, it's a double win. Not only are you making the neighborhood safer for the people who are visitors and residents, but the people who are committing the nuisance behavior, for whatever reason, lack the wherewithal to make the right decisions. They've got impulse control, cognitive deficit, mental health issues, addictions, whatever it is. But it's really incumbent upon you to help them get the help they need through these programs and ordinances, and it makes the community safe for them as well as us. You know, it's, before you guys got here, there was a fire a few years ago where someone did die under the 101 freeway. So we definitely want to make sure that that type of thing doesn't happen again. And then in terms of the vacation rental laws, I happened to be out talking to neighbors this last weekend, I'll leave the context clear, but knocked on the door looking for one person, and the other person, another person answered the door saying, hey, I'm here as a short-term renter. And it was in a zone where there shouldn't have been one, and I just said, oh, thank you for visiting our town, but I just left it at that. But I hope you can find those folks and help the property owner convert their property back to lawful and long-term residence use. So with that, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. I'll make some closing remarks, that you're right, Mr. Rouse, that, you know, they're all equally important. But I would agree with Mr. Dominguez, if we could make one and two equally important. I have to support what you have here, and really glad that we do have this function. I assume we did some of this under the other city attorney, but we've given more resources to this, Mr. Casey, if I have that right, and making it a priority. And thanks so much, Ms. Turley and Ms. Gott, for reminding us that the vacation rentals do take away from permanent housing for people who actually live and work here, that the housing supply is a separate question from whatever nuisance might come out of foot traffic and partying. I had one near my house, not really partying, but just nice people, but I would have preferred to have a neighbor and a family living there, a permanent, a permanent family. So thank you for this. We'll go ahead and close this item, and welcome to the new staff. Mr. Way is a San Francisco Giants fan, since you mentioned sports, and we will accept him and his red tie. And close the item, and go on to committee assignment reports, Ms. Clerk? Is that what it is? Okay. So this is where we report meetings and events that we've been to. I don't see any lights. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Snidham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, we closed out a successful Creek Week, a lot of activities and educational activities with our creeks. I attended a tour of Barger Canyon, and compared to last year, it's really come a long way, just a week of great events. I had a tour, I went on a tour provided by the Commercial Fishermen and of the War from Processing Plants, very informative. Attended the Common Table Event on State Street by the, supported by the CAPS Foundation.
That was good.
It was really good. And just a shout out to John Pallmentary, who volunteered his time for that entire event. I showed up later in the evening, and he was still going strong, and he seems to be everywhere, so that was a great event. And the one block was enough to have community and have things closed, I really enjoyed that. Attended a COME Operations Committee meeting, sort of an emergency meeting this morning, some issues there that needed to be attended to, and Community Choice Energy Subcommittee this morning, discussing implementation plans, which you were in attendance as well.
Thanks. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Santa Barbara Beautiful Annual Awards Ceremony out at the Music Academy, and honoring all of, many of our local residents and businesses that contribute to the charming character of Santa Barbara. And I especially want to announce the Jacaranda Award for Community Volunteer Service, went to our own Parks Commissioner of 24 years, Bibi Longstreet. And it was a much-deserved award. She has been a champion of our parks for many years, among other things, but a real community asset, and congratulations to Commissioner Longstreet. Also attended the Community Environmental Council Climate Workshop, focusing on vulnerable populations, the Central Coast Water Authority, where we discussed the issues that came to council last week, and there's more moving parts to it, so we're going to, we're continuing to focus on the issues of the Delta Conveyance Project and suspended Table A. The Audubon Society had a reception at the Museum of Natural History, introducing their new executive director, Catherine Emery. And I also attended the Community Choice Energy Subcommittee meeting. I do have a question, just in terms of getting back to the discussion we had earlier. I don't know if now's the time to address it, but just a suggestion relating to public comment, and then our own comments during public comment and making motions. I'll just say it, I think if it would be possible, if we could allow the public comment upfront to be, remain for the public, I know we've, there's been some cases where we get in discussions from it, like today, but I really believe that that is the time for the public to address us and for us to listen. And if we do have any motions or anything, that we could perhaps save those to the end and put those on the council and staff communications, or make them as part of our committee assignment reports. But I just, I just believe that in light of today's discussion, it came into more counsel having a debate, but that was really public comment to address us. So I'm just going to throw it out there, there is a public comment at the end of the agenda that we could make motions or whatever we want to do, but if we could just try to do that, to allow the public that full use of that time, I would appreciate it. It's up to my colleagues if we want to do that, but I'm going to make that suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Friedman. Mr. Dominguez?
So I attended the Common Table as well, the Aliso Street Workshop that we talked about last night, the Coalition Against Gun Violence, their annual fundraiser and celebration, the League of Cities Tri-Counties Meeting in Moore Park at the, what was it called, Madam Mayor, the Advanced Teaching Zoo?
The Teaching Zoo at Moore Park College. Beautiful up there, isn't it?
Tigers and lions and blue cranes and king, what was the snake? Did you see, did you-
I didn't take the tour of the animals.
It was pretty, pretty interesting stuff. And then there was a ribbon cutting at the work zones and a grand reopening across the street at the Paseo Nuevo. And I also attended the Climate Resilience Workshop by the Central Coast Climate Justice Network. And just, I like Mr. Friedman's suggestion about picking a certain time if we want to respond. We've just done it traditionally, the way that I've done it, which is respond, if there's a response while they're here, just so that they get to have the direct feedback. I think it is important to do listening when they want you to listen, but also if they need answers, if there's a way to get them answers promptly. I don't know how many of them will come back and watch the end, or if they want to stick around, particularly when we have one of our long days that goes eight or nine hours. But I'm open to many different suggestions, and maybe we can talk afterwards.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Klon said short answers is allowed by the Brown Act. What I worry about is that a reporter will write even a brief that says, the council said this, and the council said that, and then someone would say, well, I didn't see that on the agenda. And then that feels like a violation of the Brown Act. So we'll just be more careful, please. So I went to the, thanks for mentioning the League of Cities Dinner. It's nice to mingle with other electeds and cities in our area. They're nice people, everybody. The Community Choice Energy Meeting went well today, we're moving that program forward. The Coalition Against Gun Violence event featured medical doctors, including emergency room doctors, talking about how they put people back together after they've been a gunshot victim. And so it was a very powerful presentation. So that's it for me, we'll close that section, and we don't have a closed session, so we're adjourned until next week. Thank you.